Total at the bottom, you'll have to.
I'm just looking.
Okay, we're going to be going live shortly, okay? This meeting is now called to order and I'd like to welcome everyone this morning. Adoption of minutes.
Resolved that the minutes of the meeting held on March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two be adopted.
Someone to move and someone to second, councillor Mennel and councillor Ketchapot. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Councillor Purcell.
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Councillor Mennel.
Yes.
Councillor Giger.
Yes.
Councillor Ketchaba.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Hey, we'll move into presenting petitions, presentations and delegations. And I would like to welcome several members of the Saint Thomas Elgin Social Services. So we have Heather, Danielle and Joanne with us today. And I'm just trying to focus to see, there's Heather. So, um, good morning Heather, are you gonna start us with the conversation?
Sure, I will, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Good morning, Warden French and members of council. It's our pleasure to be with you this morning and to share with you some of the great work that we've been doing in the county around social services. I brought with me three of our colleagues, Teresa Soloski from Children's Services, Joanne Weber from Ontario Works and Danielle Nielsen from Housing and Homelessness. And we're gonna give you an update on two thousand and twenty-one. And we all welcome any questions that you may have for us after each speaker. I think would be a good time for you to ask questions to that person. And then at the end, uh, we'll give you contact information. So I think, uh, if you're ready, we'll get started and Teresa is the first one up.
Morning, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. Um, so I'm going to present on behalf of Children's Services and just give you some highlights of the year. Um, I will just preface again to say that, uh, um, you know, this was a COVID year, so the numbers are going to reflect that, but I think it'll be explain, uh, the explanation will be in the stats about where we're at. So thank you so much. Uh, I'll get you to move to the next slide. And to the next one as well. So just to start out, I let, to let you know what spaces we have in the county. Um, you can see by this, um, by this chart here that we have, um, eight hundred and eighty-seven spaces and thirty-eight percent of those are in centre-based spaces. So, uh, we're really trying to work on, um, uh, increasing our centers. And, and I'll talk a little bit about that in the future, but you can see that, uh, infants are our lowest, toddlers increased slightly, preschoolers next. And then we have, um, many school age and kindergarten spaces. And those seem to be the, the, uh, the age groupings that we are, uh, most supporting right now. And like I said, our goal is to definitely increase our center-based spaces, which is infant, toddler and preschool. And we will be doing that, uh, in the very near future. Next slide, please. Um, and again, this is just to give you an idea with regard to fee subsidy. So just to remind you, these, uh, this is care, um, that we're offering to families, uh, subsidizing their care, uh, for those families that are eligible. Um, and you can see that the numbers kind of, uh, were quite large, um, in the past and have dipped significantly. And the reason for that is because of COVID one hundred percent. Um, we definitely have families that are in need of subsidy, but just to give you a little bit of background as to what happened with subsidized care. Um, as you know, we were doing emergency childcare, uh, offering subsidized care. But the, the parameters for subsidy, um, are very specific and the funding is very specific. And families that, um, that qualify for subsidized care either have to be working or going to school. Um, and with COVID, we know that there was a lot of families that, um, uh, their employment status changed. So they were laid off or, um, were, were unable to work. And so many of those families that were on subsidy, um, were taken off subsidy because they no longer qualified for it. And what happened with that is that when those families were taken off, um, spaces became open in the, in the childcare programs. And, um, either other subsidized families moved in or more often it was families that were not on subsidy. Full fee paying families moved into spots. And so our numbers for subsidized care, uh, were, were quite low for, uh, for two thousand and twenty-one. But we are seeing a turnaround right now where we are having more families applying for care and spaces are starting to move. We will see a, a large swing in September, uh, when, uh, children who are in, um, preschool care move into school age care. Um, so we hope that those numbers will rebound back up to, um, uh, the numbers that we saw in, uh, pre-COVID, which is two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen. Maybe I'll just open up for questions because I know this is a little bit confusing. Are there any questions specific to this, uh, that anyone has before I move on? Because this is a really important piece because it is such a large drop.
Any questions for Teresa? I don't believe there are any questions at this point, Teresa.
Thank you. Okay, I'll just, I'll leave questions till the end then. Okay, next slide, please. Um, again, this is just a little bit of an indication as to what the waiting list looks like. And these are, these numbers are, um, uh, similar to what we've seen in the past. We do see that, um, uh, you know, that the infant waiting list numbers are, um, are large. Um, and they, they grow, um, as, as the child gets older. And so this is not surprising. And, um, our goal is to keep these numbers down as low as possible so that families are not on a waiting list but are actually placed in the center. And so we will continue to work on that with our providers to place as many families as we can in our, uh, available programs. Next slide, please. So just a little bit of a background about what happened this year with regard to COVID. Uh, so we were kind of all over the place. So in two thousand and twenty-one, um, the Ontario government, um, uh, encouraged us or mandated us to offer emergency childcare for school age children, uh, for critical frontline and essential workers. And there was two periods of time and you can see those dates there from the fourth of January to the twenty-fifth and then again in April until June. And, and we were able to, uh, to do that this round, um, in the following. And you can see Dutton Dunwich Milestones, Mitchell Heffer in Saint Anne's and Elgin Home Childcare. Um, just, uh, going back to the year before, we also offered emergency childcare, but we were not able to offer, um, any childcare in the county at that point. Um, but this time we were able to do that. Um, and again, it was just, uh, um, the ability of, uh, the programs to find space and to find staff. Staffing was a huge issue. Uh, we did have spaces in sometime, in some, uh, um, opportunities, but we're not able to find staff. But with two thousand and twenty-one, we were able to offer emergency childcare, uh, across a much larger, uh, geographical area and to more families as well. Um, so you can see that approximately seventy children access emergency childcare in January and a hundred and fifty-one in September. And as we offered it in January and then offered it again in, in the spring, we learned a little bit more and were able to expand the, uh, the programs um, and offer more care. Next slide, please. Um, Licensed Home Childcare, this was another program that was significantly affected by COVID. Um, you can see in the, uh, pre-COVID period, um, in two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, we worked really, really hard with our, uh, home childcare provider, which is the Early Learning Center, uh, to really recruit and retain home childcare providers. And we were still thrilled with the number thirty, um, and then COVID hit. And, um, if you can imagine, uh, Licensed Home Childcare is when, uh, provider offers care in their home. Um, it became increasingly difficult for home care providers to continue to offer care, uh, with the, um, the, uh, the restrictions placed by the ministry and by the Southwest Public Health around, um, you know, if someone in the home had COVID, could the program still offer? Um, so we did lose quite a few home childcare providers. And as you can see, we are down to fifteen, I think, um, right now, we're, we moved up slightly. But our goal, um, right now is to really get those numbers back up to the thirty because we know that home childcare, especially in the county, is, is a really wonderful and viable option for families that can't get into Saint Thomas, that are, that are out in the county, that might be traveling to other counties to work, but live within Elgin. So that is a priority for Children's Services. Uh, we will be actually embarking on a large recruitment and retention, um, campaign that's going to focus on home childcare in the very near future. So I'm sure you'll be seeing more information about that coming. And it truly is our goal to get those numbers back up, um, into the thirties and even higher. Next slide, please. Again, you can see here where our Licensed Home Childcares are located. You can see that, uh, um, like I said, that we, we really have gone down, um, uh, significantly in those numbers. Next slide, please. I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about what, uh, what happened with early on. So, um, back in March of two thousand and twenty-one, we decided as a system that we wanted to subdivide our early on programs into, uh, three separate, um, delivery areas. And, uh, previously that we had one service provider that was doing the entire, um, the entire, uh, area. But we decided that, um, that the east, the west and the central were very unique. And we wanted to make sure that the providers were focusing on the uniqueness of those, uh, service areas. So, uh, back in March of, uh, last year, we transitioned to this new service model. I want to let you know this, uh, service model is working so well. Uh, we are seeing a real targeted approach to how the service providers are approaching, um, the, the services that are being provided. Again, within the COVID restrictions. So if you can imagine, we did the majority and you'll see in some slides that are coming up. The majority of our programming was done virtually because we just couldn't have that face-to-face. But we actually are moving towards, um, uh, more outdoor. We have a lot of outdoor going on right now and more in-person is going to be starting. Uh, but we are gonna really see, uh, we're working directly with these providers, um, creating their work plans that are really targeting the programs that are, um, in the communities that they serve. So you can see, um, by the, uh, the chart at the bottom, that in the west, Tiny Tots is the lead for that, uh, program. Uh, Central is the YMCA and in the east, it's Community Living Elgin. And, uh, the one thing that we are so thrilled about is that even though the service providers are really dedicating their time and their energy on providing services in their service area, they are working collaboratively to really have this consistent model that looks similar across, um, all three, um, distinct areas, but are very unique at the same time. So we're really, really thrilled with that and, uh, we're very pleased with how this transition happened. Next slide, please. You can see here a little bit as to what, uh, what, what the services look like. And, um, you know, we never had that virtual component until COVID. But, um, uh, again, we're really happy that there were so many families that were joining us online, uh, either through Facebook groups or through, um, online, um, videos that were posted. You know, that, that became a huge part of the, the programs that were provided. You can also see that the indoor was also a very, or sorry, the outdoor was a very large portion of the services provided. Uh, when recently, um, you know, when we were able to go back outside and have that kind of physically distance outdoor programming, parents were very, very excited to come back and engage with our early on providers, but also to engage with other families in the community. And having the opportunity to be outside with children was a great way to do that. And our indoor continued a little bit in, in certain, uh, situations, but we expect that we will be going back more heavily to the indoor and the outdoor and relying less on the virtual, but also maintaining the virtual because this is something that we didn't use in the past, but we're really, um, excited about, uh, that there are some families that really are, um, really like that, that model of service delivery. So we will be continuing with that. Moving to the next slide, please. Uh, and just to give you a little bit of statistics as to what, uh, what type of virtual programming was happen, happening. Um, you can see that Facebook, YouTube and Instagram were our main form of, uh, connecting with families during the COVID period. Next slide, please. Special needs resourcing. So again, we can see a little bit of a dip. Um, so special needs re, uh, resourcing, just to remind you, is funding, uh, for program staff to support children in childcare um, and, and resource consultants to support families with special needs. And again, you can see that the numbers do, dropped significantly. Um, and again, it truly is because of COVID now that children are, um, are coming back into the programs, uh, are coming back to school age. A lot of our children were school age, um, or were aged that five point eight to twelve. Uh, we noticed that there was a significant drop there, uh, because a lot of, uh, our school age programs were not able to open um, or didn't have staffing, but we can see that that's coming back. And so we're thrilled to see that our resource consultants are moving back into, uh, the programs and are spending more time, uh, in person rather than just virtually supporting those families. We also have a pilot project right now where we've increased our resource staff by one additional person. Originally we had two and now we have three, uh, and that is a one-year pilot, um, to see if that, if having that extra support um, will, um, and, and in-person in the classrooms will help, um, support those families. So, uh, we'll be able to provide numbers on that, um, in our next presentation next year. Next slide, please. And again, just some more information about, um, the program assistance hour. So the funding that we receive, uh, goes towards supporting the resource consultants to come and do visits into the programs. And you can see, you know, in two thousand and nineteen, what the pre-COVID numbers looked like, a significant drop, uh, to two thousand and twenty because there was, um, uh, the ministry was prohibiting any visitors coming into the centers. Um, uh, and so we only saw a little bit of that taking place at the end of two thousand and twenty. And when two thousand and twenty-one started, we saw that, uh, the numbers are increasing. And we know that by two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three, we hope to be back to those pre-pandemic numbers. Um, the same is for the program assistance hours. So program assistants are those staff, uh, that are there in class, um, in the, in childcare programs, uh, to support those children with special needs while they're in the program. And again, you can see the numbers in two thousand and nineteen, pre-pandemic were quite significant. And, uh, we went down quite low, but we are back, moving back up to providing those, those hours for those children. Um, the other issue that we are definitely having and, and something that, uh, Children's Services is working on is finding staff. Um, as in with all kinds of industries across the county, um, staffing is becoming an issue and trying to find those qualified staff that are, um, able to work with children, the unique needs of those children is, is becoming, uh, difficult for some programs. Uh, but we are definitely working on a recruitment and retention program, uh, to, for those staff as well. Next slide, please. So here's the, the good news page where we talk about what are the big changes that are coming to our community with regard to childcare. Children's Services has always worked hard to expand our childcare programs because we know that we just don't have enough in our community. And so here's a list of all the programs that are, that are coming on board. So, uh, we definitely have, uh, the largest program, which is our eighty-eight space childcare programming opening up, uh, here in downtown Saint Thomas. Again, this has been years in the, uh, uh, in the negotiations with the ministry. But, um, we have, uh, we have the space and we're moving forward with that and we're thrilled about that. Um, Aldaber, Aldborough, I believe the ground has already been broken in that, uh, in that, uh, space in Rodney. Uh, forty-nine spaces, infant preschool and fifty nursery school spaces. I know the schools, again, this was years and years in the, in the making, but we are so thrilled that this project is off the ground and moving forward. Um, we also are still negotiating right now with, uh, um, Assumption Childcare in Elmer. Um, this particular program, uh, had to do a little bit of a redesign because, um, we couldn't meet the funding model. And what happened was, uh, that, that center was, uh, to have an early on and, uh, childcare program in it. But, um, rather than lose the funding and lose the opportunity, we approached the ministry and removed the early on space and moved it to Monsignor Morrison School here in Saint Thomas. And we are just continuing, uh, to work on the project about redesigning the childcare space. And we actually hope to hear from them soon as to what that's going to look like. We ended up having to, uh, move the location within the school to another location. So we're continuing that discussion with the ministry. Uh, we were just appro, uh, approved to open a fifteen-space family age grouping in Saint Mary's West Lauren and Dutton Childcare was, uh, designated the provider for that, uh, particular site. Family age grouping is a new type of childcare program for our community. It's not something that we have. Um, it's not, um, it's starting to really, uh, appear in communities around, uh, the country and the province uh, because it's not a typical childcare where there's an infant, a toddler and a preschool sp, program. Uh, this particular program is taking one room and having family age grouping. So there could be a mix of infant toddlers and preschools, uh, preschoolers to a maximum of fifteen children. Uh, so we're working closely with Dutton right now to, um, to get that program, uh, organized and figure out exactly what that's going to look like. Um, but Dutton is very excited about this age group. Um, this particular family grouping is great for smaller communities that might not be able to sustain a large program with, say, forty-nine spaces. Um, so we're really excited about that, uh, that program in West Lauren. And then the last one is that new early on center. Again, that's that program that was removed from, uh, Assumption. We didn't want to lose it and we didn't want to lose the funding. Uh, so we moved it into, um, Monsignor Morrison and the renovations are almost done within that school. And, uh, we hope that, uh, it'll be opening up very, very soon. Next slide, please. And I think that was it for my presentation. So I'll open it up for any questions. There was a lot of information, I know, uh, but I'll open it up for any questions if anybody has any.
Okay, thank you, Teresa. Are there any questions? Go ahead, Councillor McPhail.
Thank you, uh, Madame Morton. Uh, circling back to the care waitlist, uh, and the, the drop in two thousand and twenty-one, do you have a reason for that? Is that a situation where during the pandemic, people, uh, were not leaving home? So they were providing their own childcare or is it a situation where people have just literally give up trying to find that space?
We definitely are finding that, uh, families that were, um, uh, you know, forced to work from home have realized that they can actually offer care at home, especially in our school age. Um, and I think too, there is a real, um, uh, concern from some families about putting children in group care. Uh, we definitely know that some people were not, and are still not ready to put, to put their child in group care because of COVID. Uh, not necessarily, uh, because there aren't any spaces, but for sure, there are some families that are still, uh, that are still waiting for spaces. But we think that we basically, uh, are definitely from conversations with families. Uh, some families have chosen not to put their children in care, uh, for either because they're uncomfortable or because they've made alternate arrangements. Um, and so we're seeing that. Um, but like I said, I think that once, uh, once new centers start to open and, uh, we get past this, this COVID, uh, families are going to become much more comfortable with putting their, uh, their children in care and realize that, uh, that care is a, in a, in a center-based, uh, program is an op, option for them.
Hey, thank you, Teresa. Are there any further questions from council? I don't see any hands up, so thank you so much. Oh, sorry, Councillor Ketchapot, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, dealing with special needs, uh, children, uh, I guess, uh, the chart that you have on page twenty-three of, uh, of your report. It characterizes or breaks the age groups down from zero to five point eight and five point eight to twelve. I'm just kind of curious what that, uh, five, what's special about five point eight?
Five point eight is when children leave childcare settings and move into the school setting. So that's when children go into care, uh, kindergarten.
Thank you for that.
But we've kept them all kind of together. It's, it's very, very difficult sometimes for us to really kind of say an infant toddler, um, you know, to, to subdivide them, especially when they're that young. But it's that kind of preschool age and then moving into school.
Are there any further questions from council? I don't believe there's any more questions, Teresa. Thank you so very much for your report.
Oh, thank you so much for the opportunity.
And I'm not sure who's up next.
Hi, I'm up next.
Okay, go ahead. Welcome.
Okay, welcome and thank you. Um, so I'm here to talk about the Interior Works portion, um, of the two thousand and twenty-one review. So if I could have a next slide, please. So, um, similar to childcare, um, Ontario Works found two thousand and twenty-one was a roller coaster of a year. Um, so our caseloads dropped significantly in two thousand and twenty-one. Um, Ontario Works is meant to be, uh, the last resort. So for anyone that was avail, eligible for federal benefits, they would to move off to that program. Um, so we saw a drop definitely in our caseloads. Um, but in the last quarter of two thousand and twenty-one, um, we saw our applications skyrocket. And that was because the federal benefits had ended, um, the special COVID benefits through the, the federal government. So we saw that huge increase of applications in, in the fall in our last quarter. Um, so if you take a look at the cases, um, the ministry has forecasted for two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three, um, increases again. Um, so in two thousand and twenty-two, this year, their increase is estimated to be at fourteen percent. And by two thousand and twenty-three will be over the two thousand and twenty levels. Um, during this time, the province in two thousand and twenty-one, the province has been working towards modernization of social assistance. So there's recovery and renewal plan and that's taken up a considerable amount of time because there's new processes um, and, and new, um, initiatives that the ministry has, has, um, brought out. So staff are busy working on that as well as supporting clients that, um, many of them were quite isolated in their homes. And so reaching out to them to see what assistance we could provide as well. So next slide. Um, so taking a quick look at the demographics, um, the composition, I really didn't change a lot. There's only one significant change. Um, our case types, um, still remained single being our most high, highest group. And with the sole support being second, education levels changed very minimally as well. You can see in there that, um, most people have hard, largest, largest section have their grade twelve diploma. Um, some have, um, some high school. And we have a small group of co-secondary and under, uh, between the grade one and eight is their education level. So is the age of households, we still have a largest group being the group from twenty-five years of old age to forty-four years of age is still the highest group. And as far as accommodations our folks lived in, ninety-three percent were renters. So the most significant change was that in two thousand and twenty-one was that thirty-seven percent of the residents, um, were residents of Elgin County with sixty-three percent residents of the city. So that's, that's a significant change. Um, in two thousand and twenty, it was twenty-six percent of the caseload that lived in the county. So thirty-seven percent is, is a fairly significant increase. Let's back it up a next slide. So each year, the ministry sets out performance measures that we're to obtain. Um, because of COVID, we weren't required to meet those targets this year. Um, but we did do quite well based on provincial averages. So, um, if you take a look at the, the averages there, um, the percent of our caseload with employment earnings was significantly higher than the province. Unfortunately, our monthly earnings per case were a bit lower. Um, the percent of terminations exiting deployment, again, was slightly higher, as was the percent of caseload exiting to employment. So a lot of the work that we do is helping people to try to find employment. And because we know that's the most significant way to be able to move out of poverty. Um, but we also know that working, um, with life supports and life stability is very important as well. Um, because we want to address any barriers to employment before the person becomes employed or to make sure that they're able to maintain their employment. Next slide, please. So we also have a lot of cases on Interior Works as well that closed for a variety of different reasons. Um, so there's actually twenty-three reasons that a person can exit Interior Works program. Um, so about five percent of people move out of our, our area. Um, fifteen percent of the files are closed when information, we aren't able to determine eligibility because information isn't provided. Uh, sixteen percent of people don't submit their income reporting card. Um, we're pretty certain that means that we know that they're employed because they have been submitting pay stuff. So we know that they're working, but we can't close the file office success because we don't have that confirmation from the client. But that's the reason why they left. Uh, we also do a lot of work helping people to move off to programs that they may be eligible to receive. So sixteen percent of our cases in two thousand and twenty-one, um, we helped them to move off to ODSP uh, because the doctor has dedicated, they do have a medical reason. So there's lots of other reasons people leave Ontario Works. They could be going back to school, they could be finding other sources of income. So a lot of different reasons there. So when we think about Interior Works and as we think of just the financial assistance, and we definitely have the Interior Works program, temporary care assistance and emergency assistance, this is our kind of our three main programs. So the emergency assistance, um, it's a really useful to help people that have that one-time occurrence that something, um, that's happened in their lives, um, that they need that one-time assistance, um, to help them move forward. And we've really seen increase in that because of COVID. So in two thousand and twenty, we had three cases per month of emergency assistance and we had on average sixteen cases per month, um, in two thousand and twenty-one. So the life stability supports were constantly helping people try to move forward in whatever way is the right direction for them. Um, we offer employment supports for both Ontario Works and ODSP. Um, employment benefits, so we look at what things that will help people, um, move forward, what things can we financially assist them with. Um, and that may be, um, helping someone pay to get their GED, um, help them to take a short-term course, um, those types of activities. But we also helped, we realized during COVID, the isolation as well. So we, we, um, provided assistance for approximately forty refurbished computers to help people to look for work or do schooling in, in their home. We also do psychological and cognitive assessments. Um, that's helpful to let us know what the barriers may be, um, and better assist people to move forward. We also offer discretionary benefits for both Interior Works and ODSP. Um, so for, for the health-related items, those be things like, uh, dental, uh, dentures, um, medical aids that aren't covered under other programs. Um, we also assist with medical travel. Um, we know the importance of health. And so we assist if people, we can help people with mileage to, uh, attend appointments. Or we can also set up transportation, so generally taxis to help people there as well. So last year, we spent, we set up about nineteen hundred, um, rides to medical appointments in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, we also assist with funerals and burials, um, when there's no funds to do so with family. Um, so we had sixty-two funerals. So we had sixty-two funerals and burials last year. And we also do lots of referrals to other programs and services. So we're always looking at, we are meant to be the last resort. So we're looking at other sources of income the person may be eligible to receive now, whether that's CPP, old age security, EI, variety of different programs. We also assist people to obtain ID if they're in receipt of Ontario Works. We know it's really important for people to be paper-ready. You need to have that ID if you're starting employment and you also need it in most cases to find housing as well. So we really tap into all the community resources that are out there. We're constantly looking to see what's new. And seeing this year was, last two years were interesting too, to find out how people can connect community resources. Because, because of COVID, some offices were open-closed, available only by phone. So that took some time figuring out how we could connect our clients as well. Helping people to connect with medical professionals is really also a huge part of the goal as well. The help funds, we, the Ontario Work staff issue help funds. And that's the ones, ones that come through the chippy dollars from housing. So we help both OW and ODSP recipients. So, and we also help low-income individuals with help funds as well. So last year, we helped over three hundred people, individual households. And that was to help them to maintain or obtain housing through the help program. We also, if people have nowhere to go when emergency situations, we set up evacuation centers. So we have the walnut manor when that building was shut down this year or last year. And we also, this year, we had the Port Bruce flooding as well. So those, those are other kinds of work that we do. So if I could get you to go to the next slide. So last year, when I presented, I talked about Interior Works and about the rates. So the rates haven't changed. Single person still, the maximum they receive is seven hundred and thirty-three dollars a month. So that's their basic needs and shelter. And that hasn't increased. The rates have not changed for social assistance clients since 2018. So when you think about how everything houses increased, you think about increases in food and housing. It's becoming even harder and harder for people to live on social assistance. So we know that goal is employment is the best if we can get people to move off to employment. But we also know that some people aren't able to, at least at that, this period in time. So we really try to look at what all sports are available in the community to be able to help people. It's really difficult because if you're, have no place to live, you're hungry, you don't have personal supports to help you. That makes the role of Interior Works even more important to meet with clients. We work really hard to identify the individual needs and look for resource in the community to fill those gaps. We connect to different, different programs, whether the community programs or federal or other provincial programs, and really provide a lot of emotional support to people and encouragement. So next slide, please. So in, in the fall of 2020, the provincial government announced the Social Systems Recovery and Renewal Plan. Their aim is to build a more responsive, efficient and person-centered social assistance system to get people back to work. So some of the main changes are the province will be delivering financial assistance and all the backend controls. And the, the vision is Interior Works will develop, deliver, sorry, the life stability and person-centered supports. So this isn't a huge change for us. We have been delivering those supports all the way along. Though they weren't really considered a major part of our program, we knew how important that was. If you, you know, it's fine to be able to find employment, but if you can't keep that employment, that isn't helpful. So we know how important supports are to people. We also, they're also looking at the province as well, having one service delivery manager for all employment services within, within the county. So that, that will be our county, it'll be Middlesex and also be London and Oxford County. So one service delivery and manager for that whole Ontario, employment Ontario program. So that's a big change as well. And there's lots of details still to be worked out. So this is really a broad view of what it's going to look like. But it definitely will be a more holistic approach, which we're looking forward to being. So we'll continue to do what we do, helping people connect to housing and medical supports and to the, all the other agencies that are required. And we'll also be using better technologies. There's lots of changes with file. We're doing electronic signatures. We're doing electronic document management. So lots of new changes that way as well. So if I could have the next slide, please. So I think the most important thing of what we do is the people. And I think the stories really make, realize sort of what, what our role is and what we can do to assist individuals. So I just have a few stories to tell you about. We have Natalie. She was a long-term client and she'd been dealing with health issues for several years. When her health issues were resolved, she was referred to an employment counselor. And within one week, she was able to find employment. She got, she was laid off again during COVID, during one period during COVID, but she couldn't wait to go back. Her employer is really, really loving her and values the work that she does. And Natalie is now, now that she's working, she is connecting her teenager to employment services as well, so that they can get themselves a summer job. We also had Anthony. He was a recipient of Ontario of ODSP, but he came to our office for help funding. He was living in a building, he lived there for ten plus years and the building was sold and he was forced to vacate his premises. He did find a place to live, but it was significantly higher. So Ontario Work staff worked with housing staff and connected him to a portable housing benefit. So now he's can be independent. He before was relying on the goodwill of his family and his friends to help me meet his basic needs. So he says now he can breathe again. He said he didn't want to contact our office. Most people don't want to contact social assistance, but in the end, he's really happy he did. And he feels those costs are now manageable and he's more in control of his life. And one of the last ones I'll talk to you about as well is we had an individual, this is where emergency assistance was helpful. An individual contacted our office. He was seeking addiction services treatment. He was a unionized employee, but because his, he was off work, he needed to pay for his benefits. So we were able to assist through emergency assistance with some funding. And he was able to pay his benefits. So now his benefits and his addiction treatment are all paid for. And now since that, we just found out that he was able to return to his unionized paid job. So there's lots of really good news stories and every individual is so unique and so different. And that's the role of the caseworker to find what they can do to help them and to help them move forward and off assistance. So that's all I have. If you have any questions at all.
Hey, thank you very much for your report. Are there any questions from council? I don't believe I see anyone's hand, so thank you very much for your report. Thank you. And Heather, who's up next?
Hi, sorry, I was trying to find my mute button there. We have Danielle Nielsen coming up next and she's just going to give an overview of the housing and homelessness programs from this year.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you very much, Heather. Good morning, Warden and Council. And thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an update this morning on what housing and homelessness has looked like in our municipality throughout 2021. As Heather shared, my name is Danielle Nielsen and I'm the Housing Programs and Homelessness Prevention Supervisor for St. Thomas Elgin Social Services. At a very high level, I'd like to start by sharing with you that this is an area where we continue to see many challenges. And that is no different from other Canadian communities across the nation. What I am happy to share with you though, is that locally, we have a number of initiatives and projects on the go that are really helping us to move forward in our response to addressing housing, housing instability and homelessness. Next slide, please. So I'll start by sharing with you that in St. Thomas and Elgin County combined, we have just over eleven hundred units of social housing. Approximately half of those units are owned and operated by the municipality and the remainder are owned and operated by housing providers who enter into service agreements with the municipality. All of these units are required to operate under the Housing Services Act. And applications and eligibility for gaining access to social housing is processed through our St. Thomas Elgin Social Services office, which includes maintaining our social housing waitlist. Next slide, please. So the charts here provide you with some data related to our waitlist. By the end of 2021, our waitlist had grown to just over eleven hundred applications. Of the applicants waiting, approximately sixty percent of them account for families, while the other forty percent account for single applicants. Wait times on average are one to nine years, depending on building selection. In Elgin County specifically, the wait times are approximately one to four years, while in St. Thomas, the wait is approximately four to nine years. These wait times reflect the housing pressures and shortages we're seeing across all housing stock. In general, housing affordability has changed drastically in the last few years. And this has put significant pressures on resources for addressing things like housing stability and homelessness. Next slide, please. So just to switch gears here a little bit, I'd like to give you a glimpse of what homelessness looked like in our community in 2021. And to share with you that in our community, we're operating two best practices to coordinate our response and service provisions to homelessness. The first best practice being a by names list, which is a real-time person-specific data collection of all people known to be experiencing homelessness in our community. And the second best practice is coordinated access. This is a consistent process for how people at risk or experiencing homelessness are accessing housing and housing supports. What this means for us locally is that our service providers come together for regular meetings to review the by-name list and make matches to housing resources and supports in our community. In 2021, in total, one hundred and eighty-eight unique people came through the by-name list and coordinated access systems. Of those eighty-four were housed. About fifteen percent of referrals came from Elgin County, while the remainder came from St. Thomas. Currently, there are approximately one hundred people in our community identified on our by-name list. And some of the partners that participate in our coordinated access system include the West Elgin Community Health Center, YWCA Elgin, CMHA Elgin, Family Central Apartments and the In-N-Out of the Cold. Next slide, please. For the purposes of this presentation, I wanted to focus in a little bit closer on rural homelessness and housing instability. What we know from our data is that approximately thirty households experienced housing instability in 2021 in our rural areas. Of the thirty households that experienced housing instability, seventeen were supported to either stay housed or to secure housing. Some of the unique characteristics of rural homelessness include flying under the radar, increased fear of stigma and reduced privacy, reduced access to supports and services, including transportation and fewer housing options. A common rural housing instability occurrence that we have been seeing recently is long-term renters who are being displaced by landlords who are choosing now to sell their properties. This then displaces them into a rental market that they no longer are able to afford. Next slide, please. I'd like to share with you and highlight a couple of the initiatives that are happening in our rural areas to be able to respond to these challenges. In East Elgin, Family Central Apartments continues to provide services to vulnerable people, including supportive housing, food, food security, day drop in space and a winter emergency shelter response. There are currently eight occupied supportive housing apartments. To date, there have been seven unique guests who have accessed the winter shelter. And on average, the food security program is providing fifty meals a day. In West Elgin, the West Elgin Community Health Center in partnership with Family Central Apartments now employs a rural homelessness system navigator. This position was piloted in 2021 by way of Community Homeless Prevention Initiative funding. And I'm happy to share with you that in 2022, this position has moved to stable funding. In addition, West Elgin Community Health Center operates a housing stability coalition that is looking at its local housing needs. This coalition also launched a winter emergency response in 2022. And to date, no guests have required access to this shelter space. Next slide, please. This slide provides an overview of the provincial funding that municipal service managers receive to respond to homelessness and homelessness prevention, which is called the Community Homeless Prevention Initiative, otherwise known as CHIPPI. This is a provincially funded program and has been since 2013. It aims to prevent, address and reduce homelessness. The two key outcomes is helping people experiencing homelessness to obtain and retain housing and ensuring that people at risk of homelessness remain housed. The 2021, twenty-two and 2022, twenty-three CHIPPI investment plan includes financial assistance for rural homelessness initiatives in both East and West Elgin. This funding also provides financial support for people in our community with low income that have fallen behind on things like rent or utilities. As Joanne mentioned in her present, presentation, this operates through a program in our office that we call the Help Program. Next slide, please. In addition to CHIPPI, throughout COVID-19, municipal service managers also received social services relief funding. And this was funding that was set to end on March thirty-first. However, there have, there have been discussions about extending this program. To give you a little bit of information about this funding portfolio, it was also provincially provided to help communities in their response to COVID-19. It aims to help protect the health and safety of Ontario's most vulnerable citizens. It's intended to support municipalities and service providers such as shelters, food banks, emergency shelters, charities and nonprofits continue to deliver critical services throughout the pandemic. Elgin County SSRF, SSRF applications were approved through our Social Services Office and provided with financial assistance in areas such as congregate care homes and to support rural homelessness and housing challenges. Next slide, please. I thought I would also share with you a couple of examples about what all of this means for people who find themselves in vulnerable situations. I'd like to quickly note for you that while the circumstances of these stories are real, the identifying information has not been provided. I will share with you that these two examples are each from each side of the county. So I'll start with Charlie. In 2021, Charlie attended a local rural program to receive help with food security. Charlie had been sleeping in farmers' fields and in barns when he could. Charlie had been offered shelter space in St. Thomas. However, he did, did not want to leave the community where he had lived rurally his whole life. Charlie said that he'd sooner sleep outside. Initially, Charlie received regular assistance with his basic needs. In time, he completed an intake to work with our Rural Homelessness System Navigator. He began attending weekly meetings and started to set and work towards achieving goals. This work led Charlie to securing supportive housing in his rural community and Charlie remains housed there. In addition, he's now enrolled in school and is volunteering within his community as a way of giving back. The second story that I would like to share with you is Sabrina. Sabrina is a young mom who had been living with her husband and baby in a unit, a unit in a rural building that was about to be condemned. The units within this building had a number of infractions, including things like severe mold and exposed wiring. Due to these infractions, local authorities had advised that the building be shut down. And due to limited resources and limited housing stock, there was concern that this would displace people into homelessness. As a result, local authorities reached out to a local super, as service provider to gain help. By doing so, this family was able to be supported to relocate into a motel while continuing to receive support to find safe, permanent and appropriate housing. Due to our housing shortage, finding housing in their home community wasn't possible. However, the family was supported to find and relocate another rural homelessness housing opportunity. And they were very grateful for the support that they received to achieve housing stability, not only for themselves, but for their baby. Next slide, please. Part of the work that we're doing to continually advance our efforts in the area of driving homelessness and housing instability down includes becoming a Built for Zero Canada community. This includes being a part of a national movement of over thirty communities who are committed to ending chronic and veterans homelessness in Canada. This process is structured and data-driven. It's built on national and international best practices and it's designed to help communities drive homelessness down to functional zero. Functional zero means that we have few people experiencing homelessness than routinely, then are routinely housed on a monthly basis. The work in this area is challenging, but what I want to leave you with is the confidence of knowing that we are on the right track. We have our work cut out for us in this area, but we are a collaborative, committed and hard-working community. I'd like to share with you a short video that I find really summarizes in a great way how our community is responding to needs in this area. If we could play the video, please. If we could play the video, please. Warden French and Counsel, I'm mindful of your time, and if there's any technological difficulties, I'm happy to leave this video with you for future viewing.
Perhaps that might be a great idea. It seems that there is a problem, so we do appreciate that, Danielle. And I will ask if they have any questions for you. Does Counsel have any questions for Danielle? I don't believe anyone has any questions, Danielle. Does this complete your presentation?
There's one more slide, but I can make it really quick for you. I just wanted to highlight that three reports were completed in two thousand and twenty one related to housing and homelessness instability. All three reports can be found on the saintthomas.ca website, so I will save the details and also leave that for your viewing pleasure, should you choose.
Thank you so much, Danielle. Heather, are you up next?
You know what? I'm happy to have left all the information with my colleagues, and they did a great job. Just here, if there's any other questions, I've left my contact information, and I'm happy to chat with anybody offline and give me a call if you have any questions.
Okay, we appreciate that, Heather, and thank you so much for attending today.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful day.
Have a wonderful day, too. Could you read the resolution?
Resolved that the presentation titled Saint Thomas Elgin Social Services two thousand and twenty one update from Saint Thomas Elgin Social Services be received and filed.
Please someone move and someone to second, Deputy Warden Marks and Counselor Martin. And I'll turn it over to you for the vote.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell. Counselor Purcell. Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Seven one, the motion is carried.
The committee of the halls.
Resolved that we now move into committee of the hall.
Please someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Mennel and Counselor Ketchabah. And I'll turn it back over.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Or seven zero, the motion is carried.
Warden, guilty, Marks and Mennel.
Okay, the next report is Joint Accessibility Status Report two thousand and twenty one.
It has a humor.
Resolved that the report titled Joint Accessibility Status Report two thousand and twenty one dated March twenty second, two thousand and twenty two from the Accessibility Coordinator be received and filed for information and that the report titled Joint Annual Accessibility Status Report two thousand and twenty one be approved.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, please. Counselor Martin and Counselor McPhail. And good morning, Sarah. I'll turn this over to you.
Hi, good morning, Warden and members of council. Thanks for having me. So my name is Sarah. I'm the Accessibility Coordinator for the County of Elgin. The report before council details the Joint Annual Accessibility Status Report for the year of two thousand and twenty one. This was created between the County of Elgin and its local municipal partners. In the past year, we created our first joint accessibility, sorry, joint multi-year accessibility plan. And so under the I A S R, we are required to report on the accomplishments annually regarding the plan. So that is what the annual accessibility status report is focused on. Since the plan is a joint effort, the status report is now also a joint effort, and this helps increase collaboration across the county with respects to accessibility. The status report outlines continuous achievements in accessibility and the highlights that occurred in two thousand and twenty one. All achievements and highlights are important in moving towards the goal of making Ontario fully accessible by two thousand and twenty five. Despite the ongoing challenges that have resulted from the pandemic, the county and the local municipal partners have made many great accomplishments. And some of the projects and initiatives that I wanted to point out from two thousand and twenty one includes the completion of the Joint Multi-Year Accessibility Plan, the meeting of the compliance requirements for web accessibility, which is the WCAG two point O level double A requirement. Several local municipal partners did achieve this, which is exciting, and I know the County of Elgin has plans going forward to continue working on this. The Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee reviewed several projects relating to accessibility. This committee is really significant because it provides consultation to the county and central Elgin as it relates to accessibility, and they also play a really important role in ensuring the voice of people with disabilities is included in accessibility projects and initiatives. So I'm very excited to continue working with the J A C on upcoming initiatives. Several local municipal partners also received some grant funding, as you may note in the highlight section, that has allowed for renovations and updates to take place regarding the built accessible environment. So this includes things like putting in an accessible elevator, putting in accessible washrooms, widening paths in sidewalks, and stuff like that. So it's very important work that's being done, and also outdoor play spaces, which is great for children. Some local municipal partners also did some training on accessibility, and this is actually an ongoing initiative that is intended to be expanded within this year and the following year. So I'm really excited about all the work that has been achieved with respects to accessibility in two thousand and twenty one, and I'm really looking forward to the upcoming initiatives for two thousand and twenty two. I know it's a pretty quick, brief overview of that, but I am happy to answer any questions or take any feedback that anybody has on the status report.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Are there any questions for Sarah? Okay, I don't see any hands up, Sarah, so thank you very much for your report.
Thank you so much for having me. I hope everyone has a great day.
You, too.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Seven zero, the motion is carried.
The next item up is notice and extension of service accountability agreement.
Resolved that the report titled Homes Notice and Extension of Service Accountability Agreements saw extending letter March ninth, two thousand and twenty two be received and filed, and that council authorized staff to sign the notice and extension of service accountability agreements saw extending letters.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, please. Counselor Martin and Deputy Warden Marks. And good morning, Michelle. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Through you to members of council. So before you, it's the report on the notice and extension of service accountability agreements, the extending letter. The Connecting Care Act requires Ontario Health to notify a health service provider when it proposes to enter into or amend a service accountability agreement. A reminder for council that we have an AMSA agreement for our adult day programs at two of our homes and an ALSA agreement for our three homes. In twenty, or sorry, given the current state of the pandemic, the twenty two, twenty three service accountability agreements approach and associated timelines have been revised, so we don't have to do laps or caps this year. And so it's been extended for one year from April first of twenty two to March thirty first of twenty three, and the letters were attached in the council agenda for your reference and the two recommendations that the report be received and filed, and second, that council authorized staff to sign the extending letters, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Are there any questions for Michelle about this report? Okay, I don't see any hands up, so thank you, Michelle. Oh, please.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Seven zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is Administration Policy Manual Review and Revisions, March two thousand and twenty two.
Resolved that the report titled Administration Policy Manual Review and Revisions, March two thousand and twenty two, dated March ninth, two thousand and twenty two, from the Director of Homes and Senior Services be received and filed for information and that council approve the County of Elgin Homes and Senior Services Administrative Policy Manual Review and Revisions in its entirety and the Nursing Department Mandatory Program Policy Review and Revisions for two thousand and twenty.
Someone to move and someone to second, Counselor Mennel. And who's going to second it? Counselor McPhail? And I'll turn it back over to you, Michelle.
Thanks, Madam Warden. Through you to members of council. So as per the Long Term Care Home Act, policies and procedures are to be reviewed annually. This ensures inclusion of best practice and legislative guidelines. So the Homes administrators and myself reviewed the Administration Policy Manual, and the revisions are noted there for you. Additionally, the Managers of Resident Care reviewed the mandatory program policies within the Nursing Policy Manual, and there was one revision there. The rest were a review. The revised policy changes are minor in nature, and they will be communicated to staff, residents, visitors, and contracted workers as required within the Long Term Care Home Act and through the online search learning education portal. Two recommendations before council that the report be received and filed, and that council approve the policy revisions and reviews as noted in the in the report, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Are there any questions for Michelle? Seeing none, call the vote.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Seven zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is Homes Infection Control Policy two point one zero.
Resolved that the report titled Homes Infection Control Policy two point one zero Immunization Staff COVID nineteen and two point two three Pandemic Prevention and Control Staff Testing and Administration Policy one point three five Visitors and Resident Absences During a Pandemic dated March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty two, received and filed, and that council approved the amendments to the Homes Infection Control Policy two point one zero Immunization Staff COVID nineteen and two point two three Pandemic Prevention and Control Staff Testing and Administration Policy one point three five Visitors and Resident Absences During a Pandemic Policy Changes, and that staff be directed to provide an updated report to council no later than sixty days, in sixty days' time, including but not limited to such items as pandemic trends, scientific medical evidence, updated ministry and public health guidance, resident and family council feedback, labor relations outcomes, and policy and procedure revision recommendations.
Someone to move and someone to second, please. Also, Ketchabah and Counselor Martin, and I will turn this back over to Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Through you to members of council. So the Ministry of Long Term Care Directives and Public Health Guidance provide us direction related to COVID nineteen immunization and testing as well as guidance for visiting and absences within long term care homes. On March ninth, the ministry issued updated pandemic response guidance regarding each of these items. The March ninth Ministry Communication states the following. At this stage of the pandemic, we are able to shift from a provincial directive that requires homes to have a mandatory vaccination policy to a guidance based approach that continues to support homes with their employer led policies and best practices. Long term care homes as employers retain their ability to mandate vaccination requirements for existing and new staff, students, and volunteers. This shift does not change the critical importance of vaccination as a key defense against COVID nineteen. While the positive trends signal the Omicron peak is behind us, it remains as critical as ever to remain vigilant with our I P A C measures, including ongoing support for up to date COVID nineteen vaccination, including boosters through employer led policies and best practices, active screening, surveillance testing, use of personal protective equipment, I P A C audits, and outbreak management practices. In considering policy revision recommendations, staff considered the following factors. Requirements of the Occupational Health and Safety Act, specifically. Employers have a duty to take every precaution reasonable in the circumstances for the protection of a worker. And the Long Term Care Home Act Resident Bill of Rights, which states the residents have the right to a safe and secure home as well as potential impacts of pandemic measures to resident quality of life, local and provincial statistics, which have listed in the report for you, as well as consultation with southwestern public health, and those discussions were supportive of an employer led policy requiring all persons that enter the County of Elgin Long Term Care Homes to have at minimum two doses of COVID nineteen vaccination, and ideally, in addition, booster doses as suggested by the National Advisory Committee on Immunizations. As such, and after careful review of the above, staff policy revision recommendation highlights, which are included in the report, but at a high level, COVID nineteen vaccinations, two dose COVID nineteen vaccination requirement for all persons entering the home, encouraging COVID nineteen vaccination boosters for all that enter the home, no vaccination requirement for visitors for outdoor visits or absences from the home. And then continuing with screening and testing and personal protective equipment, so daily rapid antigen testing for everyone entering the home and for outdoor visits and absences from the home, continuing with our active screening, our masks and other P P E requirements. Visitors and absences, maximum of four indoors and greater than four outdoors, depending on space, and all absences are once again permitted. While it's anticipated that a mandatory two dose COVID nineteen vaccination requirement requirement may have a slight impact on indoor visit opportunities, it will provide an extended level or timeframe of protection for the vulnerable residents of our three County of Elgin homes and provide an opportunity to monitor scientific evidence and impact as the pandemic continues to evolve. The Homes Management staff is making a commitment to continue to monitor trends as reported by the Ministry and Chief Medical Officer of Health and to review the immunization policy requirements to support occupational health and safety requirements of staff and safety of residents within the Residents' Bill of Rights. Additionally, staff are making your excuse me, recommending providing an updated report to council no later than sixty days timeframe, including but not limited to pandemic trends, scientific or medical evidence, updated ministry and public health guidance, resident and family council feedback, labor relations, outcomes and discussions, and policy and procedure revisions and recommendations. At a high level, the policy recommendations included in your agenda package align with the March ninth, two thousand and twenty two Ministry Guidance, which states supporting homes with their employer led policies and best practices. And so the recommendations before you at the report be received and filed, and that the policy amendments be approved, and the sixty day report to council to come back with those items that Catherine did such a good job reading those earlier. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Michelle. Are there any questions for Michelle? Seeing none, we'll have the vote, please.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
The next item up is Information Technology Services Departmental Overview.
Resolved that the presentation titled Information Technology Services Departmental Overview dated March twenty second, two thousand and twenty two, from the Director of Information Technology Services be received and filed.
Someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Mennel and Counselor Martin. Good morning, Jeff, and I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Warden. So put together a presentation, a couple parts. First part is going to focus around First part is going to focus around cyber security. It's going to outline best practices, industry best practices, and where Elgin County is with regards to some of those best practices. Also going to address other initiatives that we either have underway or that are forthcoming. I'm also going to follow up with some other IT initiatives as they relate to strategic counter council strategic plan, service delivery review, and that sort of stuff, and hopefully there'll be some, time for some questions at the end, so. Next slide, please. Okay, so due to recent world events, I think that's where this request came from. There has been an increased awareness for cybersecurity. But then Ukraine has highlighted the risk to many critical infrastructures. So I put a brief definition of what cybersecurity is, but basically cybersecurity pertains to protecting digital assets from criminals. Why should this concern you? Well, as a society, we've become extremely dependent on technology. We communicate online, we shop online, we can access our medical records online. Most of our devices now connect online, TVs, thermostats, fridges. The greater our dependency, I think the greater our risk is going to, going to be, so. Next slide. So now I'm going to go through some industry best standards, best practices, and kind of explain them, and then I'm going to touch base on where Elgin is with regards to them, so. Keep your software up to date. Companies release software updates for a number of reasons, such as adding features or functionality, but oftentimes the updates are to address security vulnerabilities, so highly recommend that all devices are kept up to date. Run up-to-date antivirus. I think everyone's aware of what antivirus is. It provides excellent protection against various types of known malware. Next best practice is to use strong passwords. Complex passwords or passphrases are recommended, and it's also recommended to use different credentials for different sites whenever possible. One major issue is that individuals will use the same username and password on multiple sites, so they'll have the same username and password for Facebook, Instagram, all those sort of things. If one of those institutions gets compromised and your credentials end up out on the dark web, then nefarious criminals will just use that and try that against every platform out there to see if it gets in, so. It is a lot of username and passwords to remember, but it's highly recommended not to use the same one across the board, so. And the last one on here is to change default username and password, so. Again, when we purchase devices, they often come with a common username and password, so. First thing you should do before you deploy that is reset those default username and passwords, because again criminals can just do a quick search online, look at the device that you have, and find out what the username and password is and gain access to it, so. Next slide, please. Implement multi-factor authentication, so. If anyone's logged into Elgin County VPN, you know we have the dual, that is our multi-factor authentication. And multi-factor authentication is basically something you know and something you have. So what you know is your username and password, and what you have used to be key fobs with a randomly generated six-digit number that you would punch in, but now we have smartphones that we can actually get that second factor on, so. Firewalls, install firewalls wherever possible. Laptops, desktops, they all have firewalls built into them, but from a organizational level, we're typically talking about devices that sit on the edge of our network and they straddle the external and internal network, and then we apply rules that that basically control the traffic and what's allowed to traverse between those two of them, so. And the last one is be suspicious of unexpected emails, so. I'm sure everybody gets phishing emails, trying to get them to click on something. I read yesterday that third-wall breaches are a result of phishing. And the other issue is it's not only email any longer, because now you can have phishing messages sent through Facebook, texting, all that sort of stuff, so. We live in a society now where we have to be extremely cautious when we we get emails that we're not sure where they originate from. Next slide, please. Okay, so now I'm going to go through where Elgin County is with regards to some of those best practices. So keeping software up to date, what we do well. So we do have a Windows server, Windows Update Server that keeps all of our servers and our desktops up to date on a schedule. Secondary applications such as Zoom, Webex, Acrobat, most of them come with functionality that will allow you to have them automatically update, so we typically leave this enabled. So we do, we do really well with all that sort of stuff. Some areas that we have for improvement are non-Microsoft devices such as Linux and Mac. They don't have that same functionality, so it's a little bit more of a manual process. Firmware is another area of concern, so firmware basically resides on hardware, and it's basically a specific class of software that provides low-level control for that hardware. Cameras have them, switches have them, everything will have a piece like that on. Very time-consuming, and it's a manual process to keep that all up to date. So it's it's an ongoing challenge for us. And then I made note of what's referred to as the Internet of Things, and that's anything that connects to the internet, but one item that I did highlight that's a concern for us would be our cameras. They need to be upgraded, they need to be, software needs to be upgraded, all that sort of stuff. Again, it's a very difficult process, so right now we're trying to evaluate all the different types of cameras we have throughout the county, who's responsible for them, and what kind of process we can put in place to make sure that they're kept up to date, so. Next slide, please. Antivirus software, again, everyone knows what it is. You use an industry leader antivirus here, it's centrally managed, we can report on it, we can check compliance. So we do a really good job with that. Next slide, please. Yeah, some areas for improvement with that is we have continuously doing reviews of some of our software suites, and we are aware that there's a few components that we could enable. We have time scheduled with a vendor to enable some of those, and that'll provide a little bit extra protection. And the other item is, I did put a little graph on there that basically tells us what our compliance is. It doesn't look fantastic, because it says twenty-five percent is non-compliant, but the team is aware of that, and most of those that sit in non-compliance are devices that are no longer being used, so we've retired those devices. So I would say an area for improvement would be maybe housekeeping, if we can find the time to kind of clean up those sort of things, so that when we look at a graph like this, it's easier for us to action. Next slide, yeah. So using strong passwords or passphrases, what we do well is all of our accounts have passwords on them, we do have complexity requirements. We require uppercase, lowercase, special characters, numbers, all that sort of stuff. Cannot repeat passwords, things like that, so do a pretty good job with passwords. Areas for improvement are going to be considering maybe enforcing longer passwords or increasing the frequency of change, yeah, that sort of stuff, so. Slide. Default username and password, so. We do a good job when we get devices in here, we reset passwords and usernames on them right away. When we deploy laptops and desktops, we actually have a utility that deletes the local administrator account or disables the local administrator accounts, puts another account on there and anonymizes a password on there, so even IT staff can't get in there without going through this tool. So we do a really good job on that. Same with all our network devices, prior to deployment, we do reset usernames and passwords on all of them. Next slide. Yeah, so areas for improvement, I did put in here, methods of storage and retrieval, so. I keep saying we need to have different passwords for all these things, it is a lot of passwords, so. Coming up with a mechanism to manage them, such as maybe a password manager is something that we we need to consider. Multi-factor authentication, so we do well. Anyone that connects through VPN to the county is forced to have two factors. Yeah, we also have it enabled internally on our servers, so when IT staff or anyone tries to access servers, we also have to authenticate through our dual application, so. Slide. So areas for improvement, so. It's it's not something we don't do well, but I think we need to continue to be cognitive of new applications that come in, anything with an external portal or anything like that, we need to do some investigation and understand if we would be able to apply MFA to that, multi-factor authentication. Firewall, so we do firewalls here. We do a good job of restricting access from certain devices on certain ports. There are over sixty-five thousand available ports, so we really only open ports that are required for successful running of applications. We also have what's called geo-blocking enabled, and what that does is it will block traffic from certain geographical areas, so. Right now, we're actually China and and Russia are sitting in there. It's 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 a good idea to turn that on, but malicious actors, they can navigate around that, they could they could access maybe a device down the road that's been compromised, and that was all their traffic, sorry, through that, and that kind of negates the whole geo-blocking thing, but it's still, it's it's a good tool to have enabled, so. And then firewalls, what we could do for improvement, again, I noted maybe housekeeping. So rules for the firewall are typically created when applications come in. I think review, an annual review, semi-annual review of these rules would be a good next step. Slide. So suspicious email, this is something that I think everybody is well aware of, people, regardless of how much spam people get, everyone thinks it's it's too much, so we do have a layered approach for our email here. We have functions such as SPF, DKim, and DMARC, and what those do is they identify what devices are allowed to send and receive emails. It also checks integrity of emails, and then DMARC just determines how to deal with any issues. Excellent idea to have implemented, but again, malicious actors always have ways to circumvent these sort of things. Our next layer is we do have an anti-spam blocking about thirty percent of all emails on a daily basis. We've also added a banner to mail that notifies users of X, emails are coming from an external source, and they should be a little bit more cautious. And then staff has also been directed to forward any suspicious email to spam@elgin.ca so that IT staff can investigate and implement further measures to mitigate. Next slide. So here's a couple graphs of the amount of email that we receive on a daily basis. The one on the left is a standard day where we block about thirty percent of all incoming email, but the one on the right was also from the exact same week, but we blocked thirty thousand and allowed in two thousand, so it was about ninety percent, so. We do have days like that where we see spam storms, things like that. So again, I'm aware that a lot of people get spam, but we are blocking a lot of incoming email, so. And then what we can do, areas for improvement. So again, our employees and our users are always our weak link, so look into end-user awareness training options. We can also investigate and implement any additional layers from existing products that we currently have in our portfolio, which we are kind of underway doing. And then the last note I have on here is we might want to consider a improved spam filtering mechanism. So that's kind of on our list for possible budget considerations in twenty twenty-three, so. Next slide. Excuse, so now I'm just going to go through some other items that we've done as a team to bolster our cybersecurity posture. So we have joined the Canadian Centre for Cybersecurity out of Ottawa, and we participate in bi-weekly meetings that they address vulnerabilities in the sector. We've provided this organization with our external IP addresses, so they monitor them for us and they provide alerts if there's any activity on them that they're aware of that we should be actioning. We've implemented enhancements to our backup and recovery, so we've done what's called air gapping, because if a nefarious individual comes into your network, the first thing they are going to try to do is encrypt your backups, so. We've basically taken a copy of our backups offline, not accessible anymore by the through the network, through normal means, so we always have a way to recover. We are doing ongoing review of SCADA systems for our supported municipalities, we're tightening external access to SCADA, things like that. Next slide, please. Completed an annual pen test. We've implemented some mechanisms that automatically delete or disable accounts that get created after hours or on weekends in case they are being created by someone other than IT staff, and an email goes out to staff, IT staff to kind of notify them. And then forthcoming on that, we do have AR, AI Security Analyst Solution and Comprehensive Security Assessment that will be presented to council upon completion of that. So here's some items as they relate to strategic council strategic plan, so. The Terrace Lodge redevelopment, communication tender package for that redevelopment will close on Thursday. So Jeremy has been an integral part of that. The GIS implementation is ongoing with IT participating in that as well. We're continuing to leverage technologies such as increased focus on laser fish forms. And as I indicated last slide, we are going to be introducing AI into the network shortly, so. So service delivery review action, so continue to develop the team in key areas to support county initiatives as well as become marketable to other municipalities. The forthcoming cybersecurity assessment may also identify specific training needs, and along the same lines of, you know, becoming a little bit more marketable, we have had discussions with other counties to determine their team structures and how a similar structure would work for the County of Elgin. So staff continues to address items that were previously identified and documented in an IT action plan. Some are complete, some are ongoing. Increased internet speeds at the libraries, the internet dietary software, increased dependence or use of laser fish, things like that are ongoing and complete. And then things like GIS, HCM, and then we have agenda management, which will be coming. Those are ongoing, so. And then because cybersecurity has become such an integral part of IT, the results from the forthcoming cyber assessment will be combined with ongoing development of a comprehensive strategic plan for IT, look for council for. Next slide. Community connectivity, the engagement with IBA has completed, and the report will provide us with excellent resource for providing direction on connectivity in Elgin. Conversations with ISPs that are currently completing projects with SWIFT have been had, and they are confident that they will meet their deadlines. There's also the Interior Connects Program. It's created a bit of a hurry-up-and-wait scenario. It was opened in fall of twenty twenty-one, and results are expected in summer of twenty twenty-two, so we're hopeful that that goes through and and all the lots in Elgin have been bid on. Shared services, so we do currently support two large-tier municipalities, and being aware of municipal plans will help IT for scheduling, things like that, so we do have discussions going on with them to to understand any initiatives that they may have that will have an IT component. We are also considering some purchasing options where the county could leverage some of its purchasing power to receive better pricing. We are also considering some purchasing options where the county could leverage some of its purchasing power to receive better pricing and then to a cost recovery model distribute these costs to our support municipalities. So we're currently looking at this for multi-factor authentication. But there are other uses for that as well. And then I did talk about skate earlier, so we are trying to harden it as much as possible because that is if you turn on the news, those are the systems that are most concerned. So. So I got a list there of some of the IT more IT specific initiatives. So we've been trying to improve communications, not only internal to our team, but also to our customers. So we shorten our meetings, we decrease frequency, we focus on fewer items per tech rather than having a long laundry list of things. We want to try to provide our team with a sense of accomplishment. So rather than have ten things on their list, we're trying to have them focus on two to three items per week sort of thing and and get some some things wrapped up and finalized. We standardized downtime notices to ensure accurate communication to staff. High priority items, if any, exist for any given day. We communicate these out first thing in the morning and we identify a lead. We're posting cybersecurity tips on the internet now to help educate staff. And we are participating in cybersecurity by monthly calls with the Centre for Cybersecurity out of Ottawa. Next slide. Yeah, so we've put together a change management framework and we will be implementing that into our IT service management application that was approved in the twenty twenty two budget. Having a change management framework helps identify stakeholders, it documents plan for execution and provides a backup in case anything goes wrong with any changes we make. And then another thing we've done is we we're doing brief one-on-one project meetings with team members to help overcome any concerns or barriers. And again, project management will be implemented into our IT service management once we move down that road. Next slide. So I put this slide in here. So one thing we noticed is we are the definitely trending upwards with regards to IT sport requests. We have close to four hundred additional tickets in the first two months of twenty twenty two versus the same timeframe in twenty twenty one. My senses is the result of the dependency on technology as well as additional applications and and then cybersecurity as well. So this graph kind of highlights where time is being spent. It basically shows approximately fifty percent of our time is applied to reactive requests dealing with items that keep systems running and any projects that are under two days. And then larger projects make up about nineteen percent of this. So one thing that we are keeping in mind when we're developing the team is that we'd like to develop the team to be a little more proactive rather than simply reactive. So that we can suggest solutions rather than patch issues. That's right. And next slide. Yeah. So this just kind of around future direction. So as I pointed out, we do have a cybersecurity assessment forthcoming. And we know that cybersecurity will remain a very high priority for all industries, including the county. So once the assessment is complete and presented to council, council direction from that will be used to complete an IT strategic plan that aligns with council's. And this should provide Elgin County with a solid direction for future resource requirements and future budgetary considerations. That's yeah. So that's the end, but happy to answer any questions or.
Thank you, Jeff. Are there any questions for Jeff? Go ahead, Deputy Warden.
Hi, Jeff. Thanks for the report. You're where I sit on the SWIFT board and we've ever Elgin County Connectivity Committee that we've worked pretty hard, gathered a lot of information for the last two, two and a half years. You know, we we've, I think, learned a lot and gathered a lot of information. Think we have things we can do to improve connectivity. We know how important it is out in the county. I saw when you don't have the connectivity. But then I get a little frustrated when my wife says that she was talking to someone and between now and the electoral provincial election, the province is going to fix broadband faster. You know, maybe what what's your opinion? What impact is this going to have on our connectivity?
For you. So I saw that as well, and we actually did post that up on the Engage Elgin. So there is an initiative to put more money towards. It sounds like it's along along the lines of making sure that we're not duplicating work. So the dig one sort of thing, but it hasn't been presented yet, but I believe that's the the plan for all of that. So I still think that it's going to be July before we we get results back from the reverse auction or zero connects. And so earlier this week, or I guess end of last week, I talked to all three SWIFT ISPs and they all have the same concern. Resources and material is going to be the problem. So the government is saying end of twenty twenty five to have broadband available for all of its residents. In talking to the ISPs, they feel that's aggressive, but it's still doable. So I I'm not sure if it's going to be any faster than twenty twenty five, even with this additional money that the government is putting forward.
Go ahead.
Supply issues, I think we all have to understand if they can't get the product to to actually do the installations. That's one thing that'll have to work through the supply channels, but are you concerned that the province may you know, down there on Queens Park, tell Ontario how to fix their broadband after we've spent considerable time and effort tailoring how to fix it ourselves with a Elgin County solution? Are they going to tell us how to do it?
I I'm not really sure on that. I still think our best path forward is through the infrastructure Ontario option. If those lots have been bid on, I think that's our best path forward is through something like that.
I I guess I could speak for SWIFT. They're not terribly impressed with this. Like we've come up and even our consultant have sort of indicated that a hybrid solution is the best way, fastest way. And it seems as if the province is saying that their way is best for you know. When you consider the needs of Northern Ontario, Sudbury say compared to needs in Peterborough geographic areas, we're pretty unique here in Elgin, even in Elgin. The solution here in central Elgin compared to us Elgin or even up red is up, you've got the hills and bam. It's it's all different and it bothers me greatly. You know, we gather information for two and a half years and I'm not so sure Ontario was listening. So I don't know if you share those same concerns or.
Yeah, I do share those same concerns. I mean, we sit on that same committee. It's I think it's going to be unique to every area as you indicated. I think the access to that funding will be very important, but you're right. I think being dictated what's going in everywhere is maybe a little bit unsettling. And I know there has been letters to the minister and voicing our concerns and I get we're the only ones. And I wonder if that's why there's so many delays in announcing successful bidders for these lots. Is if they're going to maybe adjust some of the sizes, some of the restrictions, things like that.
Go ahead, Councilor McPhail.
Uh, thank you, Madam Warden. Again, Jeff, you're probably aware by now that councillor Marks and I and councillor Jigar are very passionate about this connectivity. As I look through your report here, yes, the IBI group has completed their tasks. I think we're all aware of that. A number of things in the connectivity report that are pretty much information that we we already know. So one of two things is going to happen here and and this is my concern that Elgin County has gone out and invested in IBI to come in, do an assessment of Elgin County and they have come back with some specific recommend recommendations that we need to look at. So the one of two things that's going to happen is that from Elgin County's perspective, and again, this falls into your leadership here, that we actively take that IBI report and we work with it and take that to the upper levels of government or we do nothing with it, which quite happens to a report and then it sits on the shelf and we don't go anywhere and we divert back to the default position and we're going to wait for someone else to solve our problem. And if you think SWIFT is going to do it or the Ontario government is going to do it or any of these people are going to do it, we're going to be a long time getting broadband into into Elgin County. So I I would like certainly from from your your position to certainly have a good, long look at the IBI report and put that into a perspective of how can we as Elgin County through our ID department move broadband forward in Elgin County? And and I one thing I do not and I cannot stand for is that report just to sit on a shelf. So us being actively involved and pushing it forward, taking it to the upper levels of government, we have we have certainly many voices around the table that will take that message to whatever government is is formed and without that, twenty twenty five is as far as I'm concerned is 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 just a dream that you know, might never materialize. So certainly I would like to see our IT department to take a much more proactive approach in working with the work that's already been done.
Deputy Warden Marks.
It's a follow-up. You know, we're heading into our last year of this term and you know, we got in here, one of my campaign things was to have our meetings live streamed and some well, how are you going to do that? We don't have connectivity. And we proceeded. Covid comes. We all struggled. Four of us on central council had terrible internet. Three of them still do. Mine is not too bad. But you know what? I fixed mine. Only me, not not central organ, not the county, not the province. There's so many would put on the SWIFT and I've had numerous people that when SWIFT going to fix my internet? Never. And unless we get going, I'm sorry, I don't think the province is going to come in to fix internet on Ferguson line. You know, and I don't want to be two and three years older waiting for this. So I think, yeah. That's why the Elgin County connectivity was formed to get an elegant solution to fix it. And I'm a little disappointed that someone down Trump can come out just before a provincial election, see they can do it better enough. So I'm very worried about it.
Are there any further questions or comments? Councillor Jigar, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I just wanted to confirm with staff that after the delivery of the IBI report, we did approve an action plan to be taken on by a collective of staff. We didn't assign one person in particular, but I do believe there is that the report is not sitting on the shelf. There is an action plan and there is action being taken, which I think includes being proactive in terms of being ahead of information, at least aligned with information coming from the province. Can I confirm that?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah. And that's what we are working towards. Yes.
Are there any further comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. The vote please.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Councillor Purcell.
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Councillor Mennel.
Yes.
Councillor Jigar.
Yes.
Councillor Ketchaba.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
At this time, I'm going to suggest that we take a ten minute break if that's okay with council.
Very much in favor.
Twenty twenty two employee benefit plan renewal.
Resolved that county council approved the twenty twenty two negotiated renewal rate adjustments with Manulife Financial for the county of Elgin.
Someone to move and someone to second. Councillor Purcell and seconded by Councillor Ketchapaw. Hi, Amy. I'll turn it over to you.
And through you, the members of the council. HR staff have recently received a presentation of the twenty twenty two benefit plan renewal by our benefit consultant, Mozy and Mozy. Ultimately, the overall ten percent increase we're looking at for twenty twenty two is based on year-over-year claims experience. Long-term disability rates that are coming off the rate guaranteed from twenty twenty and as well as inflationary increases. Long-term disability rates were capped at fifteen percent based on our marketing. And Manulife has charged this top end amount and this is also based on escalating long-term disability rates which the challenges challenges of the pandemic have not helped with. Life insurance rates are still protected by the marketing rate guarantee for one more year. Extended healthcare rates are increasing by five and a half percent and dental by twenty two and a half percent overall. And this is largely related to increased claims experience as everything opened up again in twenty twenty one following pandemic-related limitations and closures. Other impacts are related to inflationary increases, which have been significantly impacting all types of insurance across the board. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or comments that council members may have.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Are there any questions for Amy? Seeing none, we'll have the vote, please.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes.
Councillor Purcell.
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Councillor Mennel.
Yes.
Councillor Jigar.
Yes.
Councillor Ketchaba.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
The next item up is Commissioner of Oath affidavits, policy and fee.
Resolved that the March fourteenth, twenty twenty two report titled Commissioner of Oath slash affidavits, policy and fee submitted by the manager of administrative services deputy clerk be received and filed for information and that council approve Elgin County Administration Policy one point one zero Commissioner of Oath slash affidavits and that council approve a fee of twenty dollars for document commissioning services for inclusion in the twenty twenty two fees and charges by law.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Councillor Martin and Councillor Mennel. And are you going to be discussing this one? I'll turn it over to you, please, Catherine.
Uh, thank you, Madam Warden. Through you to County Council, the report before council today has two purposes. The first is to consider a draft policy for commissioning of documents and the second is to consider the inclusion of a fee of twenty dollars for these services in the twenty twenty two fees and charges by law, which will be coming before council at a future meeting. A commissioner for oaths or sorry, a commissioner for affidavits is common, more commonly referred to as a commissioner of oaths and is a person who is able to take affidavits, a written statement that is confirmed by an author and affirmation. Clerks, deputy clerks, treasurers, deputy treasurers and persons licensed under the Law Society Act to practice law in Ontario by virtue of their office are granted the authority to commission documents. Members of the public regularly rely on municipal governments to commission a number of document types, including but not limited to proof of residency documentation, vehicle transfers, insurance claims and government-related forms. A commissioner of oaths does not prepare or edit the affidavits, nor do they provide legal advice. They do not assist individuals in completing these documents or affidavits. The commissioner is responsible simply for verifying the identity of the individual through photo identification and signature and certifying that the required oath or affirmation has been declared properly. This certification is done through the affixing of a stamp or a seal and the signature of the commissioner. The commissioner is not responsible for certifying the accuracy of the statements contained in the documents in question. This is the responsibility of the This is the responsibility of his opponent. Until 2020, county staff were called on to commission documents rather infrequently. However, since we established a centralized reception area, the requests for this service have increased significantly. Staff thought it prudent to develop a formalized policy and procedure for governing this service at the county level to provide standardized guidelines for both the general public and for those who are authorized to commission documents on behalf of the County of Elgin. A draft policy has been attached to this report for council's consideration. Additionally, the County of Elgin currently does not have a fee for commissioning documents and staff reviewed fees across the County of Elgin and the city of St. Thomas. A chart is included in your report to determine whether a fee should be charged and what the fee should be. Staff are recommending that the County of Elgin adopt a commissioning fee that is consistent with the municipality of Central Elgin as to avoid a situation where all commissioning requests at 450 Sunset Drive are directed to the County of Elgin so that residents can avoid a fee, because the municipality of Central Elgin does charge a fee of $20, as does the city of St. Thomas, our, our closest municipalities for commissioning. Ensuring that Elgin's fees are consistent with Central Elgin's would ensure that the distribution of these commissioning requests for Elgin and Central Elgin would not be based on the absence of a fee at Elgin. The local municipal partner impact is just that should council approve a fee of $20 for commissioning services, the County of Elgin would notify the municipality of Central Elgin that this fee has been put in place. Communications requirements, we would notify our front desk reception staff as well as posting a copy of our policy on our website with instructions on how to obtain commissioning services at the County of Elgin. And the report is before council for consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Are there any questions for Catherine? I don't believe I see any hands up, so we'll proceed with the vote.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jagair.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchaba.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
The next item up is cold-in-place asphalt recycling.
Resolved that Roto Mill Incorporated be selected to complete cold-in-place asphalt recycling on various roads, tender number 2022 T08, at a total price of $2,889,846.51, inclusive of a $50,000 contingency allowance and exclusive of HST, and that JR Excavating Limited be selected to complete hot-mix asphalt paving on various roads, tender number 2022 T10, at a total price of $4,498,651.50, inclusive of a $50,000 contingency allowance and exclusive of HST, and that the warden and chief administrative officer be directed and authorized to sign the contracts.
Is someone to move and someone to second, please? Counselor Mennel and seconded by Deputy Warden Marks. And I'll turn this over to you, Brian, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Through you to council. Tender results are before you. Happy to report very competitive results this, this year round, as well as projected budget surpluses anticipated as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Are there any questions for Brian? Seeing none, we'll call the vote, please.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jagair. Counselor Ketchaba.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
The next item up is the Ontario Land Tribunal Planning Jurisdiction.
Resolved that the report titled Ontario Land Tribunal Planning Jurisdiction from the General Manager of Engineering Planning and Enterprise Deputy CAO dated March 14th, 2022 be received and filed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, please. Counselor McPhail and Counselor Ketchapaw, and I'll turn this over to you, Brian.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Through you to council once again. A very quick summary of, of the detailed report. A significant amount of background and discussion has been included in the staff report, which I won't go through again. But this report was prepared at the request of council in response to receipt of the Town of Aurora's council resolution. In summary, municipalities are becoming frustrated with the local planning decisions overturned by the Ontario Land Tribunal. And so municipal councils across the province have begun to line efforts and are calling upon the province to dissolve the Ontario Land Tribunal. The majority of cases, the tribunal appeals, receives appeals from developers opposing municipal planning decisions that are also detailed in, in your respective official plans, as well as the county official plan. Having reflected on the matter and considered all perspectives, staff believe an improved consultative and streamlined hybrid approach could be advocated for that provides for an opportunity for both hearings presented in writing for appropriate instances and a request for increased chairperson appointments to relieve ongoing file backlog. So with that, I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to answer any questions or receive council's direction.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Questions or comments for Brian? Counselor Mennel.
Just a comment, and, and I think we do need a, an appeal tribunal. However, it can be caught up there for years and there's no incentive for them to, to push it any faster than what is already going. So we have a time limit at our level, and I think they, they probably should have a time limit on their level between the time of application and time of decision, so.
Counselor McPhail.
I, I have to commend staff on this report. I think they've, they've summed it up very good of what the problem's in. Yes, and I agree with counsel, I mean, oh, there has to be an avenue for an appeal, but it has to be done in a timely matter where things are not sitting for months or years. And, and certainly in municipalities that are working, and I'll use West Algen for an example, that are, are working for development to have this happen. You know, it takes, it takes the boil off it and next thing you know, you're sitting and waiting. People come and move on somewhere else where they can be successful. So very good, very good job on staff.
Do you have a comment, deputy supported? Any further questions or comments? Counselor Purcell, go ahead.
Yes, I, I would just like to ask, once we give staff the authority to advocate that this be specifically pointed out to all the lower-level councils, because I know the frustration is, is pretty great at all the council levels. So if we can just send them just a little note that, that we can document that it's, the county is looking into this or advocating on all of our behalves.
Thank you, Counselor Purcell. Go ahead, Counselor Ketchapaw.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Following on the heels of Counselor Purcell's comments, I'm wondering if the, the recommendation needs to be modified slightly to grant that authority or action moving forward so that we adopt an advocacy role.
And I agree with you 100%, Counselor Ketchapaw. So I think we have to kind of agree how we would like to put a little bit more into that resolution. Any suggestions, Counselor Ketchapaw, what you'd like to see added to the resolution?
Well, simply at this point, Madam Warden, we're just receiving and filing, I think some verbiage along the line that we authorize staff to develop an advocacy plan for us to carry forward.
And rest of council, what do you think about this? Counselor McPhail.
That's one of the things that, that I see in the report here, and I think it needs some council direction is, yes, I think the report is certainly preaching to the converted here. What do we do now? Who does this report go to? Who do we send it to and what vehicle do we use to send it? And it's, it's not stated in the, in the report.
Exactly.
That's, that's where you were coming from.
Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, through you, Madam Warden, through the council. Staff are happy with council's, council's support to proceed with advocacy as detailed in the staff report and, and begin to reach out to the ministry that oversees, provides oversight over the tribunal process and, and begin our efforts there.
Okay, thank you. And council's good with what Brian has suggested? Go ahead, Counselor Ketchapaw.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that. And I see Julie's got her hand up too, is to offer further advice. But, and I also agree with what Counselor Purcell's getting at. I know that questions are being asked at my council in BAM, and I asked them to wait, knowing that this report was coming forward today. So I think there's probably a lot of support across the county. You know, we're being inundated with, with resolutions from across Ontario that, well, it's obviously no good, it's got to go. I think some, an appeal mechanism needs to be there, but at the same time, if it's being bogged down through perhaps vexatious and/or nuisance appeals and, you know, then there's a better way to do it, whether it's through, rather than verbal or appearances, but through a written medium, and that's we can encourage the province to appoint more chairman to, or chairpersons to get these appeals through in a timely manner. Yeah.
Julie, did you have your hand up? And I noticed that Steve did as well. So Julie, do you want to go first?
Certainly. So I would recommend that staff be directed to consult with our local municipal partners, prepare an advocacy strategy for council's consideration at its next meeting. And I suspect that part of the advocacy strategy will, will involve directing the warden to undertake some specific actions. So I don't see these being staff-driven actions. I see them being council-driven actions.
Okay, thank you, Julie. And Steve, did you have some further comments?
Yes, just a brief comment, and it flows from the, the comments from councillors regarding the need for an appeal tribunal, which is absolutely correct. In the absence of some form of tribunal, one, I, I would suspect that the only avenue of appeal would then become a judicial review in the Superior Court with respect to an administrative decision. And that would, that creates all sorts of other issues as well and would then create and fall within a backlog within the courts as well. So certainly agree personally that there needs to be some form of, of specialized appeal tribunal, but subject to the, to the recommendations mentioned by Mr. Lima.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Are there any further comments or questions? Did you capture that, Catherine?
I, yes, if I may, I read back something and council can tell me if it's appropriate. Resolved that the report titled Ontario Land Tribunal Planning Jurisdiction from the General Manager of Engineering Planning and Enterprise Deputy CAO dated March 14th, 2022 be received and filed, and that council direct staff to consult with local municipal partners and prepare an advocacy strategy regarding methods in order to relieve ongoing file backlog at the Ontario Land Tribunal for presentation to council at a future meeting.
Is everyone comfortable with that? Namely, the person that moved it and seconded? Is everyone okay? All right, with no further questions or comments, we'll call the vote then.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jagair.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchaba.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is Bell Next Generation 911 Authority Service Agreement.
Resolved that the within report to council dated March 16th, 2022, and entitled Elgin County Bell Next Generation 911 Authority Service Agreement be received and filed, and that county council approve and authorize the chief administrative officer to execute the proposed Next Generation 911 Authority Service Agreement as between Elgin County and Bell Canada in the form and of the content attached.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, please. Counselor Martin and Counselor Mennel, and I'll turn this over to you, Brian.
I think it's me, Madam Warden.
I asked Brian and he said he would do it if you couldn't. So are you able to do it then, Julie?
Certainly, yes. Thanks, Madam Warden. Through you to members of council. The purpose of this report is to seek council's authorization to execute an agreement with Bell Canada for Next Generation 911 Authority Service. This is required in order for Bell Canada to provide Next Generation 911 services in Elgin County. Elgin County has contracted 911 Primary Public Safety Answering Point and 911 Emergency Response Network to Northern 911, and has done so since 2010. Northern 911 has confirmed that this agreement is required as part of the transition to Next Generation 911. And once executed, Northern 911 is committed to working with Bell to perform onboarding. Switching over to the next, to the new Next Generation 911 is an important step in ensuring new features become available for 911 services in our community. This will enhance accessibility for public assistance requests, and it will afford dispatch services and enhanced ability to access information. It is recommended that council authorize the warden and CAO to execute the agreement as included for your consideration within today's agenda. And with that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Julie. Are there any questions for Julie? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the vote, please.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jagair.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchaba.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
The next item up is the updated COVID-19 measures.
Resolved that the report titled Updated COVID-19 Measures dated March 17th, 2022 from the Chief Administrative Officer be received and filed, and that county council support the ongoing implementation of the COVID-19 Vaccine Verification Policy Number 8.390 for a minimum of 60 days.
Is someone to move and someone to second, please? Deputy Warden Marks and please someone to second and Counselor Mennel. And I'll turn this over to you, Julie.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Throughout the pandemic, we have closely aligned our response to COVID-19 with provincial guidance and mandates, as well as the advice of our local medical officer of health. As provincial restrictions are eased, we continue to review existing health and safety practices, policies and precautions for our organization. And that's with the assistance of our Joint Health and Safety Committee. The recommendations noted within this report are drafted to align with the guidance recently provided by Southwestern Public Health and are presented to council after careful review and consideration of the county's obligation to ensure the health and safety of our staff and the public we, we serve. This report considers a number of changes to our response to COVID-19. As an organization, we have worked incredibly hard to keep our staff and community safe. As such, the recommendations reflect measured approach to resuming normalcy and relays our commitment to review and reevaluate our practices, policies and procedures. It also affords us time to consult with our staff and the Joint Health and Safety Committee. While many of the recommendations are operational in nature, this report seeks council support for the ongoing implementation of the COVID-19 Vaccine Verification Policy, which is number 8.390 for a minimum of 60 days. This does apply to non-long-term care home staff, and the timeline for review aligns with a review of policies for long-term care homes as approved by council earlier today. With that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Julie. Are there any questions for Julie concerning this report? Seeing none, I'll call the vote, please.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jagair.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchaba.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
The next item up is council correspondence items for consideration. There are none. Items for information consent agenda. To read the resolution, please.
Resolved that correspondence items number 7.2.1-7.2.4 be received and filed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, please. Counselor Ketchapaw and Counselor Jagair. Councillor Ketchabah and councillor Jagair. Now just turn it over to council. Do you have any questions or concerns about any of these items on the consent agenda? Councillor Martin, go ahead.
I'm just aware of this this email from Jessica Johnson requesting reconsideration of the Thames Valley Rural Education Task Force draft report. There was a meeting held on March the tenth in Dorchester, which were about sixty people present, and a third of them were from Elgin County, about a third from Oxford and a third from Middlesex. And a lot of them were very disappointed in the sense that Oxford County and Middlesex County councils both unanimously supported the draft, the report in principle, and were very concerned that Elgin hadn't. Myself, I was in attendance, and as Deputy Warden Marks was in attendance. So that was the request that they made, that they are asking that that be reconsidered.
It's entirely up to council. Okay, does council want to have a discussion about what councillor Martin is suggesting? Councillor Mennel, go ahead.
Councillor Ketchabah just passed me on for the from the February the eighth meeting, and it appears that we've supported this. But I'm reading here.
It's Madam Warden, what it is is reflecting in the minutes and also included in the section or point, the fifth page, excuse me, of the county highlights for the February meeting is that council's already addressed the issue of the 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 board makeup and sent correspondence not only to the Thames Valley Board Chair, as well as the Director of Education, as well as the Minister of Education and the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. If there is any any part that perhaps we may have failed was we didn't copy in our two county colleagues or this, you know, Oxford and Middlesex to let them know that we do support the current makeup of the board. So if the goal of of addressing or receiving or or excuse me of adopting in principle, the rural task force report was simply to advocate for the the maintaining of the status quo of the board. We've done that. We did that forty two days ago.
Go ahead, councillor Martin.
That wasn't what was requested. It was the the task force was set up by the board at the request of the board. They were assigned each county was assigned a representative on it, and four trustees were on it. And they worked quite diligently, holding public meetings and consulting with people over the last almost three years because of COVID. It was longer than anticipated. And that that report was virtually ready to go to the board in draft. It was draft form. We were to finalize it. We were going to have consultations with the native communities and then get to make sure that they were in total agreement with it before it was in final report to go to the board. And two staff members canceled all meetings. And so consequently, we have been unable to complete it. And they, that was why the committee, not myself, it was the committee, the Rural Education Task Force Committee asked that it go to the three county councils for their endorsement in principle of what the report had said. So that it could be then taken to the board so that they could allow it to be completed and finalized before it goes. At the moment, it's just sitting in limbo because we'll see what happens tonight, but it's not on the agenda. They haven't put it on the agenda, even though it was to be brought tonight.
Councillor McFale and then deputy Warden.
Okay, this is just me thinking out loud, and I think we've all read and reviewed the report. And I don't think that there's anybody in the room here that has not heard from their rural residents a lot of the issues that have been discussed in that report. You know, and trying to stay within our own lane, because it is a school board responsibility to deal with this report. But is there any appetite around the table here for this council or the warden sending a letter to the Thames Valley School Board outlining a number of things that we have reviewed the report? And yes, we have heard a lot of the things in that report as rural politicians over many, many years. We understand that it does take time for these reports to be assessed by the school board. But I think that we should be very upfront in the fact that, you know, in all honesty, the toothpaste is out of the tube. We've seen the report. And I think that we should be on record telling the school board that, yes, you know, we're looking forward to you adjudicating this report. And we look forward to your coming back with final synopsis of the report. And that Elgin County supports rural education and has all along. Certainly, I know that between Julie and the warden, they can they can craft an appropriate letter, and it just simply says to the school board, we know that you know your move, you got to deal with it somehow or other, or it'll come back to this table. And then it is negligence on the school board to deal with something that that they commissioned in the first place.
Deputy Warden, go ahead.
As Mayor Martin or councillor Martin stated, I did attend. I think it was called an information session. It was not a meeting. I strongly indicated twice that I was in favor of rural education. Actually, that's a correction. I stated that Elgin County Council councillors were strongly in favor of rural education. I think that probably was spoke on behalf of council, but I'm pretty sure that everyone agreed with that. I thought if we were going to have a discussion here, we'd have to have a motion, you know, to revisit this and the two thirds. And I did not believe there was enough appetite for that. But I guess we're sort of having this discussion already. But again, I I firmly believe that this council supports rural education. And I think we've sent a message, strong message that, yeah, we think that trustee balance should remain. But, you know, ultimately, it's our elected trustees and make that decision later tonight. I sure hope personally that they leave it the way it is, but time will tell.
Are there other comments about any of the items on the consent agenda? Councillor Martin.
I appreciate councillor McFale's suggestion that a letter should go saying that we do support it, that we've read it. The whole or not that you support that, but we support rural education, and we know that the task force was assigned to do this job, and they should be allowed to complete the job so that the the Thames Valley Board can then make their decision. The final decision is with them. But when two staff members stop the process and won't allow it to be completed, it's very difficult for the task force, which was assigned and set up by the Board of Education to do the job. It's hard to complete the job because of what's been happening. And that's the reason that it went to all the county councils, because you each had appointed someone to sit on that task force, and you wanted that job done.
Okay, so oh, sorry, councillor Jagair, go ahead. I apologize.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to have a point of order, Madam Warden, just to because I feel that we are discussing a resolution regarding the task force that was disposed of. So is is there a motion right now to rescind that motion? Because I do feel we are making it sound like it's something different, but we are revisiting a motion that was passed.
You're correct, and no worries. I was going to address that. I'm just letting people talk. Because basically, we are referring to the letter from Jessica Johnson, which is in regard to this. But you're absolutely correct. There's not that specific resolution out there right at the moment. So we're going to work our way through this, councillor Jagair. And I'm I'm going to ask Julie too for some advice. Julie, do you mind just giving us a bit more advice about this?
Sure. So so what I gather is that a response to Jessica is warranted. So to to provide her with information that resulted from council's decision. So council did receive and file the report from the Rural Education Task Force at its meeting on March the eighth. Additionally, what I'm hearing, and I believe what our procedural bylaw allows for is council may direct that a letter be sent to the school board that relays council's decision on March eighth that you received and filed the report. And further, that some of the contents within the report are similar to the feedback that you've heard in the community as local elected officials. And that you look forward to receiving the report in its finalized version, should it be available.
So what you're suggesting is that they're two different entities, right? So we'll be we'll be voting on the one for receive and file, and then the other one will be a different resolution. And to be honest with you, I'm not so sure we can even do that under the consent agenda because there's no specific item. I'm concerned about that. What you suggested, that first we answer Jessica's letter, that's appropriate. But then the next course of action, I'm not sure. Would you recommend that during this particular portion of the agenda? I guess that's my concern. Councillor Ketchabah.
Perhaps a backdoor approach, Madam Warden, would simply do copy in the chair of the school board on Jessica's response.
Okay, and that's appropriate. I'm just trying to get everybody on board to make sure we address this appropriately. Councillor Martin.
Certainly, under items for information, and that are new items. It could be, it could be asked that the, we need a two thirds majority to reconsider and possibly then implement our previous decision, which was just to re see, but I thought councillor McFale had an excellent idea about what type of letter. And I don't know if we can't do that at this point. We could do it maybe under.
Julie, go ahead.
Thanks, Madam Warden. So reconsideration is not possible pursuant to council's procedural bylaw twenty two B. That reconsideration has to happen. A reconsideration of a motion must take place at the same meeting or in a multi day session the next day.
I apologize. It's not essential. I can do it at any time with the two thirds.
What councillor Ketchabah suggested, Julie, we could do that as that that would be appropriate, right? And that's what I'm trying to make sure that all the councils on board with that approach. Are we okay with that approach then? Okay.
That would have the same effect.
Yes.
Communicates it across. So we we've got it.
Did you have a comment? Go ahead, Steve.
Sure, my my comment related again to procedure. I don't think that there is, there is no appropriate motion to even to even allow for a consideration of the previous of the previous decision. So there are special rules relating to it, people thrown around the two thirds requirement for the consideration. The other matter relates to the involvement of the of the previous the previous mover and seconder within the within the calculations of passage. But at this stage, there is no there is no question before properly before council that relates to that relates to a reconsideration of the original decision.
Certainly, and thank you for that, Steve. So I think we have come up with something that council's comfortable with, and that is appropriate. So Catherine, have you captured all that? And maybe you could read that resolution once more, please?
Sure. So we could put it all into one if the if council is and the mover and seconder are okay with that. So the first would be resolved that correspondence items seven point two point one, seven point two point two and seven point two point four be received and filed, and that correspondence be sent to Jessica Johnson relaying council's decision to receive and file the report from the Rural Education Task Force and relaying council's support for rural education and relaying that sorry, that we have heard the concerns of our constituents regarding rural schools.
And I believe you wanted that we wanted this sent to the Thames Valley.
Yes, and copy, yes, Thames Valley District School Board.
I was going to suggest the further clause that we anticipate or we look forward to the final draft, or excuse me, final report. Review.
Right. Okay, so I will include that in there as well, that we include that we look forward to receiving the final draft of the report from the Rural Education Task Force.
Councillor Mennel.
Or from the Thames Valley District School Board, my apologies.
But the final report, not the final draft.
Final.
Final report.
Could we also include our neighbors in Middlesex and Oxford in that? Because I think they should know where we stand.
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, we will include that. We will copy Middlesex and Oxford.
And everyone's okay with this now?
That should be sent real quick.
Okay.
Because your meeting, school board's meeting.
All right, with no further questions or comments, we're all comfortable with that. I will call the vote then.
Councillor McFale.
Yes.
Councillor Purcell.
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Councillor Mennel.
Yes.
Councillor Jagair.
Yes.
Councillor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Other business statements and inquiries by members. And I do have a statement to share, and it is concerning Elgin County Council's support for rural schools. On behalf of my colleagues on Elgin County Council, I would like to express the county's unwavering support for rural schools. Council recognizes the critical role that local schools play in the continued vibrancy of our rural communities. Not only do these schools allow rural students to access quality education within their own communities, but they act as important hubs for community activity. When essential funding for rural schools is cut or rural schools are closed, our communities are impacted negatively. Over the past several years, the County of Elgin has engaged in considerable school retention and advocacy efforts, including, but not limited to, advocate advocating for the preservation of rural schools, including Sparta Public School, Springfield Public School, and New Serum Public School, advocating for the construction of a new school in Belmont, reviewing and providing comments regarding new provincial policies and guidelines relating to rural schools, including the Elementary Pupil Accommodation Review, meeting annually with representatives from the T V D S B and the L C D S B to receive updates and address concerns that residents have expressed in regards to education. Appointing councillor Sally Martin to sit on the Rural Education Task Force formed by T V D S B, advocating through our membership in the Community Schools Alliance for a moratorium on school closures and for additional funding, recognizing the unique value of rural and northern schools. Adopting a school retention plan in May of twenty twenty one that formally lays out Elgin's commitment to ongoing retention efforts. And most recently, council supported a resolution to designate Middlesex County a low population municipality, allowing for the municipality to retain two positions on the T V D S B, thus ensuring that rural communities continue to have equitable representation on the board. The County Council is grateful for the opportunity to preview the report from the Rural Education Task Force at our meeting held on March eighth, twenty twenty two. We are also grateful for the opportunity to have a council representative sit on the Rural Education Task Force and for the work that councillor Martin has done in her role as a liaison between the task force and the County of Elgin. We look forward to the T V D S B's review of the report and to receiving a final copy for our own review. Elgin County Council is committed to meaningful actions that will ensure our students receive the best education possible. And our advocacy efforts in this area will continue as long as is necessary. Are there any other statements or inquiry? Are there any other statements or inquiries? Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, thank you, Madam. Um, I think everyone's sitting around the table here has witnessed uh sitting comfortably in our armchairs, the firsthand humanitarian crisis that's happening with the evacuees from uh from Ukraine. Uh, it's, it's absolutely heartbreaking. Uh and I, and I'm just wondering, uh, is it a situation that as we are sitting in our comfortable chairs watching the news, having a good meal with our families? Should this council contemplate uh sending some uh financial resources to uh the Red Cross to assist those uh in, in those terrible, terrible situations? And I know that I believe with with donations to the Red Cross that is the uh federal government matching those dollars. So certainly I, I am making this under statements and uh uh certainly if uh someone feels the uh, the movement that uh under notice of motion, they could put that forward to we could bring it to our next meeting.
Okay. Are there any further statements or inquiries by members? Uh, go ahead, Counselor.
I would just fully support what Councilman Phil said. I have supported the Red Cross myself, and I think it's you know, I, I would like to see us do something.
Okay. So there's no further statements or inquiries. What we move into the next item is notice of motion? Are there any notices of motion?
I, I'll, I'll make that as a notice of motion. Yes. Support it.
Okay. And I'll turn that over to you, so.
Would the, the resolution be that uh a report be brought to council at the April sixth, twenty twenty-two council meeting regarding a donation to the Red Cross for the humanitarian crisis in Ukraine?
That would be fine. And, and I, with that notice of motion, I certainly would uh be comfortable with, with staff researching and uh coming back with a recommended dollar fact figure to that donation.
Okay. Um, and I'm not sure, and I'm gonna be honest, I don't do this well with notice of motion here because Elmer does it differently. So I'm not sure the approach, I'm gonna turn to Julie. Uh, we've got a notice of motion. And so how do we pursue, proceed from here? We've got the direction, what we want in the notice of motion. Uh, we don't vote on it though, do we, at this time, Julie? It's just gonna be brought back at the next meeting, right?
That is correct.
Okay, just double checking. I just don't wanna uh not follow protocol. Thank you, Julie, and thank you, council. Uh, the next item up is matters of urgency.
Resolved that Elgin County Council consider one additional report from the purchasing coordinator titled procurement policy exemption for community paramedicine program purchases.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. So Counselor Mennel and Counselor Ketchabah. And did, did you wanna discuss this any further, Catherine? It's pretty evident what we're doing, so.
I think we need to call the vote.
All right, yep.
Uh, Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jager.
Yes.
Sir Ketchabah.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
And mine would be yes as well.
Sorry, Counselor Mennel.
Mennel. Mendo.
Mendo.
Getting closer.
That the March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two report titled procurement policy exemption for community paramedicine program purchases submitted by the chief administrative officer and purchasing coordinator be received and filed and that purchasing for the community paramedicine program twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal funding year be exempt from the county's procurement policy and that the purchasing coordinator be authorized to purchase the required equipment for the community paramedicine program by the March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two deadline using existing suppliers and contracts where possible.
Hey, so someone to move and someone to second. Deputy Warden Marks and Counselor Martin, and I see Mike's here, so I'll turn it over to you, Mike.
Great. Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Warden, through you to county council. Uh, so the purpose of this report is just to seek council's approval of exempting the purchases from the community paramedicine program from the county's uh procurement policy. Uh, so council's aware that they recently approved for one-time funding over a two and a half year period at the February twenty-second meeting. The agreement provides for funding of just over eight hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, which ends in less than two weeks on March thirty-first. And there is no ministry extension available. So due to the tight timelines and supply chain issues, uh, it's actually impossible to source the required equipment according to the county's procurement policy by that March thirty-first deadline. Uh, therefore, uh, staff is seeking council's approval to exempt these purchases from the procurement policy. Uh, section four eleven of the policy does allow for one-time exemptions for this type of scenario. Uh, so this exemption will only apply to the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal funding year purchases. Uh, and with that, the recommendations are before you, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions concerning this? Seeing none, we'll call the vote, please.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jager.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Okay, could you read the next resolution, please?
Resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with the municipal act to discuss the following matters under municipal act section two hundred and thirty-nine, two. Uh, the security of the property of the municipality or local board. Information explicitly supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board by Canada, a province or territory or crown agency or any of them. K, a position, plan or procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board property matter. In camera item number two, K, a position, plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board financial services. And in camera item number three, B, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, long-term care.
Please, someone to move and someone to second, please. Counselor Mennel, seconded by Counselor Purcell. And um all those in favor and we'll call the vote.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jager. Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Welcome back, everyone. Motion to rise and report, please.
Resolved that we do now rise and report.
Please, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Ketchabah and Counselor McPhail, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor and we'll call for the vote.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jager. Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Uh, in camera item number one.
Resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Martin and Deputy Warden Marks, are there any questions or comments? I'll call the vote.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jager. Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
In camera item number two.
Resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Someone to move and someone to second, please. Counselor McPhail and Counselor Ketchabah. Call for the vote, please.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jager.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
In camera item number three.
Resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Someone to move and someone to second. Deputy Warden Marks and seconded by Counselor Purcell. Call for the vote, please.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jager.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Motion to adopt recommendations from the committee of the whole.
Resolved that we do now adopt recommendations of the committee of the whole.
Someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Martin. And Counselor Ketchabah, call for the vote, please.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jager.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Consideration of bylaws.
Being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of the municipal, or sorry, resolved that bylaw number twenty-two eighteen be now read a first, second and third time and finally passed. Being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of the municipal council of the corporation of the county of Elgin at the March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Deputy Warden Marks and seconded by Counselor McPhail, and we'll call the vote, please.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jager.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
And the final one, adjournment?
Resolved that we do now adjourn at one twelve P M to meet again on April sixth at one P M.
Moved by Deputy Warden Marks and seconded by
Everybody.
Counselor Mennel, and we'll call the vote, please.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Mennel.
Yes.
Counselor Jager.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Warden French.
Yes.
Eight zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you, everyone.
How are you feeling, Julie?